I'd like to call this regular city council meeting on March 7th, 2019 to order. Please call the rule.
Isa.
Here.
Goose.
Here.
Kiefer.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Bergeron.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That brings us on to communications. We have a number of things on the table. We have some new alternate motions in regards to liquor license renewal. We have the law 7B3 in regards to utility rates. We have to move that on to the agenda to make sure that'll be the 7A3. If there's no objections, we will do that. 7B3, excuse me. Brings us on to notifications of the block grant awards for the Catch Can Wish to Nothing But Shelter. We have a notation or a lot for the Whitman Lake Rescue Operation part served 2019, a report on that. Impacts of Governor Dunleavy's amended FY 2020 state budget and how that's going to affect the city and utilities. And then we have a note that we made, an approved amendment for the city council meeting on February 21st, 2019, revised it to add to tables for the community agency recommended approved plan. Move this down into person to be heard. First off, Willie O'Brien.
Can you guess why I'm here?
I'm week and day again.
All right, it's time for your Irish jig. Everyone use the Irish jig. Well, that's it. Now I've got it. Good evening, distinguished panel, distinguished city council members in your honor. My name is Willie O'Brien, and I don't know if you know this, but I am here to request once again the Seventh Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, being held here on Saturday, March 16th, around 2:00. I have been in touch with both Carl and Eric, the deputy chief of police, and I know that they've talked to Chief White also about it. And unfortunately, this year, due to the construction that's out in front on the street, we wanted to go from birth two to birth four, and that we are going to make it just a marching parade. And we'll start somewhere on birth one. We won't be in anyone's way, and we'll just march it down along the promenade to birth four. And unless the construction gets done really quick and we can open it up, you know, come on, Carl. But I want to, I want to thank you for recognizing the Irish of Ketchikan and the celebration that, like I said, this is seven years, and we still have more people coming in from Seattle to follow this band that we bring in every year. I think we're up to about 25 people coming in from Seattle. So the word's getting out that this will be a spring break destination in about 10 years for all the kids. So, and I do want to thank the Ketchikan Police Department and the Fire Department, too, for all their participation. The Coast Guard will be, once again, the honor guard will be leading the parade. And you're all are welcome. And come rain, shine, snow, or freezing weather, we will be having the parade. So, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Willie.
Thank you. And I know you've got more important things to deal with, so I'll dance out.
Ryan, Pritz, you're up first.
I don't have music or good ass, but I might be able to do that. I actually made a packet, if that's okay, if it can be passed around. It just kind of goes over all the information that we'll kind of throw out there to you guys today. First off, I'm Ryan Pritz. I'm a detective with Ketchikan Police Department. I'm here on behalf of our PSEA Union, which I represent. I'm the president of our chapter here in Ketchikan. And what we've brought forward today that we kind of wanted to get out in the open was health trust transfer that we're trying to get into. Kind of a quick history of it. Our PSEA health trust is dissolving. It's going away. It'll no longer exist as of July 1st of this year. And all of our members, there'd be 27 of them, that includes police officers, our evidence custodian, and our dispatchers at that point, aren't on any type of insurance. So our union got information and they found ASEA that was willing to take all of our members on. And part of that is there's rates that have been set by ASEA, which are currently lower than what's being paid for our health insurance premiums at this time. And it also lowers the price for our employees for their cost of the premium towards it. Yeah. So the main, main point kind of off that is the first year with the insurance rates dropping about $100, it's $100 almost even for what it would cost the employer for the premium, just based off of our 27 members. That saves the city of Ketchikan approximately $33,000 in the first year, just on insurance premiums. And on top, as you guys can see the rates on there, the deductibles are extremely low. The max out-of-pocket for our employees and their families is extremely low. And it allows more of, we're able to afford to, to seek medical attention again and not have to worry what bill's going to come after it at that point. I have Brett Johnson here. He's one of our PSEA representatives, and he can answer more in-depth questions. He has more knowledge on the health trust than I do. So, are there any questions, I guess, based off of that quick information?
So in the beginning, Ryan, you stated, what group would be without insurance as of July?
Our PSEA members.
Okay. And how many do you have? What are the group?
Twenty-seven members. It includes our police officers, our dispatchers, and our evidence custodian. And if we didn't get authorized to join ASEA, our option at this point would be to join onto the city's insurance. And part of the savings with what these numbers are with ASEA, the health cost premiums are a lot less than what the city can offer. So it saves money off of PSEA's insurance and off of what the city's currently offering also.
So that would be the city Blue Cross?
Yes.
Okay.
How long have you guys been looking into this? I mean, it's up in July, so...
It's up in July. We, I would say about a year ago, it was being discussed that PSEA was going to be dissolving, and we had left an opener in our contract when everybody across the city had signed their contracts. We left our health insurance portion open with it, which allowed us to negotiate our health insurance later down the line.
Okay. And is there, my understanding is there's a deadline for this?
Yeah, the deadline is March 15th to have the final MOU sign, which I had attached in the packets that I handed out. It's on the very back of the packets. The March 15th deadline, we're assuming it could be extended if this was to be considered an option. We know Fairbanks has gotten a partial extension to, I believe it's around March 25th or 26th, because their council has to vote on everything, and it has to, it just has to go through all the proper people and everything. So we would assume that if we had the right response, that we could go to ASEA and say, it's possible it's going to be voted on. Can we get that same extension that Fairbanks did? And we wouldn't, we would have no reason to see why that they wouldn't grant that to us.
So is this scheduled as an agenda item then, Carl?
No, it is not.
So maybe we should have this as a future agenda item and have that discussion? We need four hands for that?
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So is this also after four years, the plan actually goes down in cost, too, right?
Yeah, that third, that third year option, the plan costs what it would cost the city for their portion of the health insurance premium, actually drops $5. It's not a huge amount, but there's not many insurance plans out there that are offering their numbers three years in advance, and one of those numbers is actually dropping at that point. That third year, my understanding, though, just based off of our current collective bargaining agreement, ours expires June 30th of 2021, so we necessarily wouldn't be signing to that third, that third year right off the bat. That would be later on when negotiations for our future contract come into play.
And then the PPO, the, say the, if that's not a preferred provider, it still doesn't happen or even anyway. It's just, I noticed that it's just a 15%. You get a discount at 15%, or $15,000 on a $30,000 billing amount if it's a PPO hospital versus a non. So it's not going to cost anymore for the patient.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm not, I'm not 100% what you're asking, so I don't know if I could get this.
I'm just looking at this. Out-of-network penalties.
Okay.
So if they're, do we know if Ketchikan's mostly out-of-network, or if it's...
When it comes to in-network and out-of-network, just my experience based off of medical situations from our current insurance that we're on, most of the stuff you can get in-network when you, when you call and you explain to them that there's no other options unless insurance wants to kick in an airline bill for a 600-mile trip to somewhere else.
Okay, that's what it is.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
But this will at lea, I mean, I'm, I just think at least we'll have the opportunity to have the conversation, and I'm assuming we'll get more information then from both sides as to what's, what's best for us to look at if it's an agenda item.
So this, this is actually part of a contrast negotiation.
Correct.
So could you explain how that, that works out? So we're getting information here, and I appreciate that. But in regards to moving forward this...
With, with the council's permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like the Assistant City Manager to come up and give our take relative to the process that's involved. She's been the lead spokesperson for this, so.
Sorry. Good evening, Lacey Simpson, Assistant City Manager. On February 1st, the city received a letter from PSEA Executive Director Mike Robbins requesting that the city consider reopening Article 15 of the collective bargaining agreement between the city and PSEA. The reason for that was the PSEA health trust would be dissolving come July 1st, as Mr. Pritz stated, and they would like to transfer to the ASEA health trust. We were given rates, as Mr. Pritz had just handed out to all of you. Those rates are predetermined. The final year of rates extends beyond the current collective bargaining agreement that we have with PSEA. We met with Mr. Pritz and PSEA members for a period of weeks after that initial contact on February 1st. We didn't have any prior information on the health trust prior to February 1st of this year. We met several times, and each time we met, we gained some new information. And ultimately, at this point, we chose not to recommend transferring to the ASEA health trust because the rates are predetermined by the ASEA Health Trust Board of Trustees. With every bargaining agreement that the city has with the various bargaining units, we're able to negotiate the copays between the employee and the employer. In this model, the city would not have a place at the table for bargaining those rates. If we wanted our employees to join the ASEA health trust, we would simply need to go along with the predetermined rates. Another aspect of a potential agreement in reopening Article 15 and transferring to the ASEA health trust is, in all of our collective bargaining agreements, we have language in which if a premium increases from one year to the next, we share in that cost. The employees and the employer share in that cost. And we were unable to come to terms on that continued share, knowing that rates were predetermined for both employees and employers. So at this moment, we recommended not to put this in front of the council. Obviously, if the council feels otherwise and would like to learn more about it, we can certainly do that. But with the time that we were given, we weren't able to reach an agreement on memorandum of understanding between PSEA and the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead and move on. Ryan, are you finished? Do we bring up Brent?
Thank you, folks. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Brent Johnson. I work as a state trooper, but I'm here as a PSEA representative, Public Safety Employees Association. I'm currently the DPS chapter president. I'm also, as such, a member of the PSEA health trust. I'm a trustee. Kind of full disclosure, I've been a trustee for approximately a month and a half. So in fact, my first order of business as a trustee was to sign a document to dissolve the trust, which was quite a unique experience for me. So I've kind of had a crash course in this. But what I want to lay out for you folks real quick is just some numbers. And I'm not a number person, I'll be the first one to say that. But currently, by the collective bargaining agreement the city Ketchikan has with its PSEA members, they pay $1,631 per month, per member, for health insurance. That's already been negotiated. That's, that's written in stone for at least the next two years. Looking at some of the numbers that Ryan actually provided me for other city employees, just to go down through them. Your firefighters, if, if you're looking at an employee and, and a spouse, and any number of children, right now, the city pays between $1,992 up to $2,200 per employee. Your Blue Cross Blue Shield covered employees, which is the same as the current PSEA health trust, for just an employee and spouse, you're paying at least $1,680 up to $2,675 per employee. The ASEA plan that we've looked at, the reason the PSEA health trust looked to another option was simply because the rates and coverage that the PSEA health trust was able to offer were no longer going to be sustainable. They recognized that either rates were going to skyrocket for our members and thus also their employers, and/or coverage would be severely reduced. So rather than go insolvent, we, they, I'm going to say "we," it wasn't really me at the time, looked at other options. What they found was ASEA, which is the Alaska State Employees Association. They have a health trust that is extremely strong. The numbers I've seen are, as far as financials, hundreds of times what PSEA's health trust financials were. Their membership is in the 8,000 to 9,000 member range versus ours, which was about 800. And obviously, when it comes to health insurance, the more people you have in a group, the cheaper rates you're going to get. I think everybody knows that. So when we talk about rates being locked in, yeah, normally you can't lock in a rate more than a year out. You have to negotiate with the provider usually about this time of year, January, February, you start to do that. You figure out what the rates are going to be based upon past usage, and by March, April, you have an idea of what you're going to pay for the next fiscal year, because they go from July 1st to June 30th. ASEA, because of their size and strength, is able to pre-negotiate these with their provider, in this case, up to three years out. So when we talk about locked in for three years, that's not necessarily true. ASEA is providing what those numbers are going to be three years out. That's a benefit that we never have. And those numbers are between 1,530, highest is 1,555. So no matter what number you look at, it's a significant savings over what the city is paying, both for its current PSEA members and all its other members. Significant savings. And to put it into perspective, as Ryan mentioned, by switching to this plan, you're looking at saving in the first year alone, just with 27 members, about $33,000, $32,000, $33,000. That's a net savings to the city. If you do nothing and your employees have to go to the city Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, by our calculations, you're in fact going to be paying, I believe it was $30,000 or $40,000 more. So a net loss of more like $60,000 per year. Over the life of this contract, over the life of the current contract that the city of Ketchikan has with its PSEA members, we looked at a net difference basically of $150,000 between putting those members on the city's Blue Cross Blue Shield plan and what those costs, those extra costs will be to the city versus moving those same 27 employees to the ASEA health plan and the subsequent savings that the city will get. That's just the city savings. That doesn't take into account what these hard-working city employees are going to save, both out-of-pocket for their own insurance payments, but also their deductibles. The ASEA plan runs greater than 60% reduction in deductibles for, for its health coverage, for its members. The caps on out-of-pocket expenses are about 60% less than what we're paying right now. Everything is cheaper because it's a bigger group. They, they can negotiate better rates. And again, I'm not the expert, and I understand that for some folks, it's really hard to look at something and go, wait, everybody's saving money. There's got to be something wrong with this. And I, and I understand that. I had the same thought. How, how can this be better for the employer, better for the employees, and get cheaper healthcare, and it be better healthcare, too? It was really hard to believe. But when you look at how healthcare is managed and run, and when they negotiate group rates, you start to see how this is possible. You know, another thing I noticed looking through your guys' numbers is currently the PSEA employees are actually paying more out-of-pocket for their health insurance than any other employee in the city. The PSEA members are currently paying $468, almost $469. Your other employees are paying quite a bit less, depending on what plan you look at. I think it's on page three there. It shows what the employee rates are paying. And I think there's only one I saw where the employee is paying more, and that's the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that's employees, spouses, and two-plus kids, I think. That's the only one where the employee pays more. The employee payout on the ASEA plan drops by almost 50%. So your employees are saving $250 a month on their out-of-pocket. The city is saving $100, down to $70 per month out-of-pocket for those same employees. So again, you've got to look at the net savings. The city's saving money, the employee's saving money. That employee's saving money, where's that money going? Back into the city, because they're not spending on healthcare anymore, maybe out of town. They're spending it at the local diner. They're spending it at the coffee shop. They're spending it at the grocery store. You know, we talk about the negotiations, the three-year rate that they've set. And again, the MOU is basically set out, ASEA is grandfathered under the Affordable Care Act, and I had to have a lawyer explain this to me. Apparently, it's a big deal. Under the Affordable Care Act, this grandfather status allows them to do things that most healthcare plans cannot do, and it's a huge financial savings for them. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't explain the ins and outs. The crash course I got basically said was, there is nothing they will do that will risk losing that grandfather status. And one of the things on that grandfather status is that everybody has to pay that minimum contribution rate. And that's where those numbers come in, when we talk about locking into those numbers. They're not going to be willing to give up that grandfather status for 8,000 to 9,000 members, for 27 Ketchikan employees, or for 800 PSEA employees, when you count all the troopers and everything, too. They're not going to do it. And I don't blame them. It would cost them millions of dollars a year to give that up. So when they lock in those rates, what they're saying is, this is what we need everybody to pay. Now, how that's negotiated in collective bargaining, they, they've made clear that's between the respective employer and the employees when they come to collective bargaining. Under collective bargaining, healthcare, salary benefits are always on the table. We're having this discussion at the state level right now, too, with a similar, similar concern. Just because the city has to pay a set rate and may, maybe not be able to on papers do that 50/50 split, doesn't mean you can't negotiate with your employees to make up that money in some other area, whether it be salary or whether it be benefits. So the net cost is no different. It's just how it plays out on paper. And I guess what I'd leave you with is, I know sometimes things can sound too good to be true. Look at the numbers. Look at the documentation. I'm here because it's, this is a good plan, and it's good for the employees. It's good for the city. It's a cost savings, and a significant cost savings. Roughly $100,000, $150,000 for two years. It's pretty significant, in my book. And that's just the city's savings. I don't think we can calculate what it's going to save your employees. It's going to give them better health coverage. And, you know, when we're all struggling for employees, especially public safety employees, you know, the things they're looking at are salary, healthcare, cost of living, and probably retirement. This is one of like the big three or the big four. And healthcare's a huge thing. And I guess the final thing I'll, I'll throw out there that may not have been mentioned before, I've read through the ASEA trust documents. They have right in there a clause, and it's been there for a while, that's what's allowing us to get in on this, that says, any government agency, any public employer can come to them and try to get on board. So there's nothing to say that other city employees couldn't get involved with this. We know what the rates are. They're the same for everybody. Doesn't matter if you're a police officer, an electrician, DOT worker, it's the same for everybody. And as we've shown, they're significantly cheaper than, than anybody else can offer. We, we've invited people to shop around and try to find a better rate. You won't find a better rate. You won't find better coverage. You won't find better deductibles that don't exist in the state of Alaska, period. Again, the city's current plan is going to cost a lot more money. We, we think this is worth the council looking at and considering. Look at the numbers. We're talking about giving up something so good over the benefit of being able to negotiate a 50/50 split. The total difference over the three years of these contracts is $25. So we're talking about a 50/50 split of $25. Doesn't seem good to me. Any questions?
Thank you.
Pardon me. Well, this came to the city on 2-1. It's now 3-7. It's come into the council for the first time. It does sound like there's an awful lot of upside to this plan. I understand staff's concern. Seating control in any portion of the union negotiation shouldn't be taken lightly. My concern is, there is the possibility, not the certainty, that the deadline could be extended to the 26th. Our next regular meeting's on the 21st. I see no possible way we can have action taken, decided with proper scrutiny of this for that. So since we don't know which direction we should go as a council yet, since this is brand-new to us, should there be a special session where, where we can discuss this to try to get out in front of this? I don't know if there's a possibility that you folks get an extension past the 26th. I have no idea.
If I may, so I'm in contact with the, the legal team who's been negotiating with this. They were actually going to be on deck to call in if they thought it was appropriate tonight. One of them's in Seattle. Given that this was an open, public forum, I didn't think that you would take testimony over the phone, so I, but I can certainly find that out for you guys by tomorrow morning and get that to Ryan, and we can get that answered fairly quickly for you.
I think that'd be beneficial. Thank you.
Ty Walker.
My name's Ty Walker. I'm a resident in Marlboro. I've been with the city for just over 20 years. Very thankful to have a job. I'm very thankful for the opportunity the city's given me. I'm here to tell you that you have a great police department, that the police department is 100% behind the chief of police and his vision for serving the community. There's lots of members of our department here, and they're here in support of, of this proposed insurance change. And I can tell you a little bit of history. Last year, city, city hall came to us with a proposal for, for nominal increases for the next three years, and we would do away with bargaining. All the other bargaining units in the city agreed to it. We agreed to it with caveat. We knew our insurance wasn't what we wanted, and we offered to negotiate, we wanted to negotiate insurance, and the city said, yes, we can talk about that later. I'm frustrated with the city, and I'm also frustrated with my union for a bevy of reasons. I'm not a, I'm not an elected officer in my union. As my dad would say, I'm the mushroom. I'm tucked in the dark and fed, you know what. But what I'm, I'm getting, just on the periphery, this is new information to you folks that you guys got this week, because you were contacted by, by Ryan Pritz. And I know that goes outside the decorum, and I'm upset with my union for going outside the standards of decorum. But this is a, a good plan. I've looked at the city plan, and that's what the city's offering. I know that, that our union came to the city in short order, and we need an answer. And, and I know, I understand the city's position, that they've given up some of their, they've never done it in the past. But this is a good deal for, for us, the employees, and it's also a good deal for the for the city. And I think this could be hammered out with a memorandum of understanding, or I don't know what the exact verbiage is, but I think we can get this, it should be able to be One last thing, I'll just mention that, you know, in the last seven years, we've lost, five officers have all gone to work for the borough. They all left for different reasons. We're anxious to see what the compensation plan comes up with. I can tell you that we are way underpaid compared to Juneau Police Department, Alaska State Troopers, and we're underpaid compared to Sitka Police Department. The five officers, they went over to the borough, was one thing, they did have in common, they all got a pay raise immediately, and they all got better insurance when they were there. Do you have any questions?
Any question? Thank you, Guy. So we have, next up, Leisha.
I'm Leisha Kelly King, I live at 427 Carlana. First of all, I want to thank you so much for the, for supporting Ronan's Senior Day service and the mission that we have of taking care of the seniors in our community and people with different abilities. I am so grateful that you realize how important that mission is and how important that work is. And I, I just want to thank you so much. Secondly, I wanted to know if any of you heard the explosion on Carlana about two weeks ago? No? Wow! Because at my house, it was huge when I got my utility bill for $700, and I sort of went crazy, and I'm wondering, and then I read all of the articles in the newspaper about the diesel old and breaking down and no water, and I'm wondering if we have, as a city, put together a task force or something to find other energy sources?
So there, the city is working through the SEPA organization, we're looking at wind generation and the potential that we may have in the area here. We're also looking at more hydro to help augment it. Well, we have a storage problem in our facilities, we don't have enough water. And with the droughts that we've had, the lack of inflows and the demands, the rise in demands, we've been using the resources that we have, and we just haven't been replenishing at the state that they are. This is the first year that we've really had to face this to the extent that we are in today. The three communities meet every Monday to look at what the loads are, what the lake levels are, what the diesel generation are, what the conditions of the diesel are. And then every Tuesday, the SEPA organizations meet with the operators of the three communities, and they go over the operation plan to try to figure that out. So we've done a lot to try to figure out our way out, outside, and how to best utilize the resources and maintain the power to the community. But the unfortunate thing is, without a lack of water, we have, we have people.
So, again, my question is, is are, do we have a task force to find different opportunities, energy opportunities? Because in a blind rage, in 15 minutes, on a bad computer, I found a bunch of different things that, you know, may not work here, but at least it's something to look at. Tidal waves, wind, community-supported wind farms. And I know that there's a lot of people in this town, probably in this room, that are incredibly much smarter than I am, that are not blinded by crazy rage at a $700 utility bill, that could probably figure out, put together a task force and find something, wind energy, or, and do you know that there's this thing where the turbines in the ocean? And the ocean currents turn those turbines and generate electricity? What? And generate energy? What? Are we looking at that? Because I'm looking out there, I, you know, the ocean's right there. And I know that it's going to cost, I know it's not tomorrow. I realize it can't be tomorrow, or it couldn't even be, you know, five years down the road, but we need to start looking now. We need to put together, I'm asking you, urging you strongly, Mr. Bergeron, to put together some type of task force, or, or, you know, just throw it out there in the community. Hey, who is smarter than Leisha that will be on this task force, that will look for different energy sources, different ways that we can have energy, that, oh, for goodness sake, Denmark is powered without, with wind? Finland? Finland? We're smart, we can figure that out. And so, we've got to figure out something. You know, we've got diesels that are falling apart, and I'm sure that Mr. Amlo is banging his head against the wall sometimes. So what I'm suggesting to you is, is let's put together something to, let's look at other communities, maybe in Finland, maybe in Denmark, Iceland, you know, they've got all that hot energy, though, but, you know, we've got geothermal, I don't even know what that means, but I found it, energy that we could do, those, these current turbines that, you know, may be something that we could look at. But we've got to look at something other than what we've got. So I'm just throwing that out there and hoping that next month, my utility bill isn't $700. Please, God, my children need milk. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you, and eh-huh. Any questions? If you would like this incredibly interesting information, I'll take my utility bill out, and you can have it.
Sure. And for your information, there has been some research in geothermal in the local area. Matter of fact, they were at Belle Island looking at it, but it's just not enough volume to sustain a power generation. There's some, there's some small quantities there, and so they had engineers, and they grilled some test holes and did some sampling up in the area, but it just didn't pan out. And then again, with these Metler towers, right now, what they're trying to do is determine where the, where the wind is sustainable, so you can invest in a, in a wind generator that will provide power because of that.
Well, there's some interesting information about community-based wind farms that aren't those big giant ones that you see it out across the springs. You know, they're like, you know, little.
Yep.
And, and we do have the sun here, you know, solar panels, solar energy, I don't know. All I know is that I can't afford a $700 utility bill regularly.
And I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Agnes. How are you doing?
I'm great.
Great.
I'm just here to say thank you. I appreciate you guys going forward with the Community Development Block grant. As you know, it was received. I want to say thank you to Mark and his crew, they did a great job. I don't know if any of you guys saw that, that grant thing, it was about this thing that they put together, and they had to have how many copies of it. But they were a joy to work with, very smoothly, and you can see the results, and we're really excited to get moving forward with this project. So I'm just here to say thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy.
Any question? Thank you, Agnes.
All right, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Landon Morgan, I'm from the Royal Order Moose Lodge 224, tonight. I believe you guys are going to be discussing our liquor license. You know, I've read up a little bit, and I understand, like, you know, I just mostly wanted to come in and say we're not being kind of wallflowers about it. The plumbing thing, we thought it was done, sort of misunderstanding with the company. So that'll be done and ready for inspection this week. And with the taxes, I know this is not the first time we've fallen behind on them. We have, we took a little bit of a business hit when the smoking ban first started, and we have, you know, had to adjust our business accordingly. And we've taken on some, we got a couple of pretty major expenses that we had to deal with. That being said, we already have some fundraisers going, we've got another one in the mix, and we're also looking for, we're also going to be having a meeting this weekend to discuss other financing. So, you know, just, just wanted to make sure you guys knew that before we got into your vote tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Norman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, esteemed council, staff, and members of the public. My name's Norman Elliott, I reside at 3225 Triple Line Court, been there since 2001. Last year, on the city council agenda was the topic of addressing the concern of the cruise ships dumping at our ports. Where that went, I don't know. I haven't heard or read any more about it. But what I want to address is the fact that I've been sitting down with some of our elders in the community who like to go out and get subsistence traditional native foods. Number one is seaweed. And I talked to one of the elders in the group, and his comment was that Percy Island, Doll Head, South Carolina Point, Mallard Bay, Garter Bay, Moria Sound, all those areas, the seaweed is dead. And what he meant by dead was it's white. Now, if you look at a geographical map of Ketchikan area, you'll see that these areas where all the seaweed is dead is where the cruise ships go by, whether they're sailing north or south. So it's my opinion that when they're traveling, whether it be at night, going north or south, they're dumping. And I'm kind of disappointed in our newly-elected governor who bought our vote with our PFD by promising a full PFD plus giving portions of the last three years that Walker had cut. I'd rather get a portion of that PFD, because once they start looking at that budget, which they've already had, and of course, the legislature has to address it and come up with a better idea rather than shut down our Alaska Marine Highway ferry system, which is in dire need in southeast Alaska. But, you know, also, the Canadian government, I think the city of Ketchikan, you know, we've been good neighbors with them for quite some time now, and I think we need to stop that and look at the fact that those abandoned mines that they had left and didn't clean up, all that toxic waste is dumping into the unit, which flows into southeast Alaska. Ketchikan Union Committee was the only tribe, well, here in Ketchikan, that addressed the concerns that they have about that unit, because it's not only wiped out the ooligan run, there's no more salmon that go up there to spawn. And this will be the second year that the king salmon derby will be shut down, because there are no more king salmon. And I can remember years back, king salmon got up to as much as 95 pounds. Now, you're lucky, for the past four years, they've been 33.2 pounds that won the derby, which is very discouraging. So I think the city of Ketchikan ought to look at taking that sign down on Mission, which says, "Ketchikan, king salmon, capital of world." There are no more king salmon, folks, I'm sorry. And Alaska State Fishing Game started up a committee addressing concerns that we have about what's going on in our waters. And one issue that I addressed, and I'm sure you folks read the paper, Sitka Tribe has taken the state fishing game to court to oppose the herring spawn fishery in Sitka, because that used to be a large spawn, just like the Shakes. The Shakes was wiped out 35 years ago. And where did they go? Well, overfished, total mismatch by our Alaska State Fishing Game. So I think the city of Ketchikan, our elected leader, started writing propositions to the Alaska State Fish Game opposing the herring roe fishery, because last year, they took, well, actually, I think, yeah, December of last year, they took 400 tons. I know my dad, when he worked at EC Phil for 48 years, I can remember him telling me, they usually shipped out 100 tons of herring. And I asked Ms. Dougherty, who's the Alaska State Fishing Game Vice Chair of this committee that was formed last year, how many tons did they take this year? He goes, well, I can't really say. Give me a round figure, or a guesstimate. I said, well, maybe. He said, well, what do they use that herring for? She said, bait. Well, if there's no more female herring, there's no more herring. Am I right? So I would ask the city council, our elected leader, to start waking up and smell the roses, because it won't be long, and they'll be wiping out everything else. Since the king are wiped out, they're going to go after the halibut, and there are very few halibut out, because all these charter operators that take these tourists that come into town every five months out of the year, take them fishing, and they don't care what they catch, as long as they have something on the end of that hook. So with that, thanks for your time, and I'll probably be coming back at some point, so I'm going to try to have a little bit better documentation other than just verbal, because like I said, I've been meeting with our elders, and they have some big concerns, you know? A blind man could read Umbra, that if they continue to fish that herring, it's going to be completely wiped out like the Shakes was 35 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Darryl Nichols. Oh, I sang it.
Yeah, you did. You don't need to. See the way you are?
There's a bug, I'm not my glasses. You're fine to say hi. You're present.
Okay, that brings us to our end of our list for persons to be heard. Moves us on to consent agenda. If there are no objections, I would like to add, I'm sending a business appointment to boards and commissions, and thank Maureen Eldridge and Dylan Bob Simpson, who was the student rep for, putting in her names for those. I'd also like to add 7A1, 2, 3, and 4, in those regards to final change orders on some contracts and the award of some petition wall replacements and interior door project.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move to consent, adding the appointment to boards and commissions and 7A1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second, we're all in record, right?
And all of us.
So I have a motion to consent, and it's the second, and you could please read the items.
Maybe a lot.
That's right, reading through it.
For the amendments, regular city council meeting of February 21st, 2019, exempting procurement of the annual software maintenance agreement for the First City Libraries Consortium from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Cyrus Dynex. Approving 2019 agreement between the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Visitors Bureau, Inc., change order number one, final to contract number 1827, Solid Voice Building Interior Mechanical Package, Smalk Mechanical Contractors, Inc., exempting the procurement of the IBM I-Series Platform Maintenance Agreement for the Information Technology Department from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Comsoft. A budget transfer, mayor and council humanitarian services grant awards, liquor license renewal for BPO Alx Lodge, Ocean View, Alaska Fish House, and Bar Harbor Restaurant has been removed, to be considered later. Exempting procurement of the second media delivery system for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and I think it's called Wilt. Exempting procurement of the VMware licenses, VM design and deployment services, and VM licensing for the telecommunications division from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, GC-SIT Solutions. Appointments to boards and commissions, Mayor Seiferson. Change order number one, final to contract 1822, Totem Heritage Center ADA Restroom Construction, Dawson Construction. Change order number one, final to contract number 1823, Solid Voice Building Interior Electrical Package, Island Electrical, Inc. Award of contract 1903, Ted Ferry Civic Center Petition Wall Replacement, Island Contractor, Inc. Change order number one, final to contract number 1818, Ted Ferry Civic Center Interior Door Project.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
Bergeron.
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. That moves us on into unfinished business, six A, one. We have an executive session for that and we will take up that motion at the end of the executive session. Moves us on down to item seven A, five, discuss the local bidder preference award. That comes from the rising.
Uh, yes, I wanna thank our attorney, he's not here, he is here. So I wanna thank you for the correspondence and based on the fact that we're right now out of compliance with I don't see how the council back in nineteen ninety-seven agreed to increase it from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand based on the recommendation from our attorney back then. I'm gonna drop it. I don't wanna take it any further because I agree with our attorney. The risk is too high and we're already out of, it's already non-constitutional. So I don't wanna take it any further. But I appreciate all of the research that was done and that was excellent. Thank you.
Any comment? Thank you, Duke. That moves us on to item seven A, six, liquor license renewal, Ketchikan Royal Order of Move.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council direct stopped to contact the Ketchikan Royal Order of Moves, number two twenty-four, to inform that the building code violation as detailed in the building officials letter of February twenty-second, twenty-nine must be completed and to satisfy delinquent sales tax obligation to the satisfaction of the city council by March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Then moving second, Sam.
I think the motion is self-explanatory, Your Honor.
So we're gonna, they'll have to come back to us with a approved connection with sewer inspection by that date and plus they will have to come back with a plan for, I guess, with the borough in regards to their sales tax issues. And we'll take it up again if that takes place. Is that what I understand? Any other, Thomas?
No, not a plan, but a satisfied thing.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
So with protests, we still have, if those items are not complied with by the twenty-first, we still would have that meeting to make a decision and then we can move forward with the protest for the first meeting in April and have, give notice to the AMCO board.
So we meet the time requirement?
We still need to retire, we have sixty days from the day we receive the notice from the AMCO board, which was February twenty-first. And so we have really plenty of time to give them some time to try to comply with some of these issues.
All right. Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item seven B, one, offer of employment, telecommunications division network operations and engineering manager. We have a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council authorize the general manager to offer the position of telecommunications division network operations and engineer, engineering manager to Mr. Daniel White of Ketchikan, Alaska, based on a compensation level of grade nine eighty-eight, step zero, step O, at an annual salary of a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and annual vacation accrual of fifteen days per year.
Second, moving second.
Nothing.
Anybody else?
This is the guy who's been working for us.
Yeah, yeah.
For a minute. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage? Yes. Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That passes, moves us on to item seven B, two, budget transfer additional costs associated with rental diesel generation.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Move the city council authorize the general manager to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from appropriated reserves of the KPU Enterprise Fund to the electric division's rent and leases machinery and equipment account, number six forty-five dot O two, to fund an additional eight weeks of generator rental and associated costs.
Second. Move and second. Mark.
Nothing, Your Honor.
So Carl, it sounds like this is gonna take, when we use this money, it's gonna run us through April thirtieth, so we get us through the end of April. And of course, we're all hoping for increased inflows and all that. But I think the reality of it is, is even when we start getting inflows, we're gonna be burning some diesel in order to augment the filling of the reservoirs.
I would agree.
And I don't know how long we're gonna end up having to run diesel generation. And I know that I asked this early on, I don't know what the cost of one of these units are, but I was wondering if as we move through this process, if there's any possibility we have a rent lease with the option to purchase so we can apply some of those ways.
We had an in-depth discussion of that issue in our weekly electorship meeting earlier this week. And based on what we've experienced during these diesel runs, Mr. Donato and I agree, these are not the units you wanna buy. We are having to provide tender loving care on a daily basis just to keep these things running. And that's really not where you wanna invest your dollars. They've really helped us through the crunch, but I think you would wanna have something a bit different.
I appreciate the answer, thank you. Any other question?
Do we have?
Yeah.
Do we have anything that we could look at?
We're gonna be doing that in accordance with the direction we got for the budget, both in terms of rehabbing our current units and then looking at what the next diesel capacity unit that we need to acquire is gonna be. I, I understand the comments of the earlier speaker when she was addressing the issue of the cost of the diesel campaign that we've been in. I don't know whether this is a trend, this is the first year of a ten-year cycle. I know based on what we're being told by NOAA, we are in for six months of extra dry weather. So we could be into a diesel run very easily in the next fall and it's very expensive. Earlier this week, we took on two hundred and forty thousand gallons of diesel down at Bailey and under current circumstances, we're burning anywhere between eighteen thousand and twenty thousand gallons a day. That's what it takes to keep the lights on. And I will tell you, your operators and your mechanics are pulling yeoman's duty keeping the lights on and they deserve all the credit in the world for the efforts they're putting in. And we're not alone, you know. We had a SEPA meeting, I'm sure the mayor will address it in his comments, but for the first time, I think in anybody's recent memory, Petersburg and Wrangle are running diesels and that's something they've never had to do before in terms of these type of weather conditions. A lot of that's tied to the intertie and we had a lot of discussion on that. But this, this is new, new territory for us. And I will give the SEPA staff all the credit in the world for monitoring it on a daily basis just as Andy's folks are and everybody's talking to each other. But we are not out of the woods yet and we got a ways to go.
So Carl, in regards to utility rates, right now we have the ten point six cents per kilowatt and the diesel surcharge is covering all the costs in regards to the, the operations of the diesels.
The surcharge in the March bills would be three plus cents. So you're looking at like a thirty percent increase on the residential rate. Your next business item, that's why I brought that forward. I, I think under the circumstances, we really need to hold off implementing the rate increase that was approved as part of the budget that's scheduled to take effect April one. The rationale and the basis for that rate increase hasn't gone away and it needs to happen, but now isn't the time to do it. And I, I think we need to give that relief to the rate payers.
Yes.
Thank you. I, I think we had a speaker tonight talking about a task force. So my observations of the way that we have ourselves structured within SEPA and how we generate power and how we, to me at least, to my opinion is, is that we seem to have a, a real strong limiting factor on other generation resources coming into the system. I think the idea of a task force or a fresh set of eyes, especially in this time of drought, especially when we're burning diesel, I think it's a good opportunity for us to take a long, hard look on how we're structured and some low-line fruit for opportunities for new generation resources like wind, something that is, you know, not quite as out there as tidal or something like that. But I think that this is a problem, but it's also an opportunity. It's an opportunity because we need to start looking at other ways to generate electricity other than relying on, you know, mother nature to fill our dams because it's not working. You know, the other speaker came and talked about, you know, the environment, how that was changing and, you know, the, the king salmon, the raw fish runs. I, I am alarmed at, at what I'm seeing in my own country about how the weather's changing, about how, you know, salmon runs are changing. We've had, if we have another year this year of the salmon runs being stronger on the north than they are in the south, that'll be unprecedented. I can't remember in my lifetime seeing stuff like that. So things are definitely changing. But I think that instead of us throwing up our arms in the air and saying that we can't do anything, I think that we need to look at what we're doing and how we're operating and how we're set up and make some changes. I think it's, I think it's a good opportunity for us to really take a look, have some fresh people come in and look, some unbiased folks and say, "We could be doing this. We could be doing something different and make some changes." You know, we've talked about wind at this table for a long time. How come we don't have any? How come we don't have one windmill by now? You should. So that's the end of my comments and that's something that I'm gonna bring up, I think is a future agenda item for, for us to look at the way that we are, we operate and how hard it is for other folks to tie into our system and things like that. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other comments in regards to the motion that's before us in regards to the rental of diesel? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to seven B, three. Do we have a handout in regards to that? We have a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council direct the general manager to postpone implementation of the three and one-half percent electric rate increase as authorized by ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen eighty-eight as the diesel surcharges that began May fifth, two thousand and eighteen expire.
The movement's seconded. You have anything more?
Nothing more.
So we had the diesel surcharge on the bill and that is spread over a period of time. Is that, that correct? So what we're seeing today will be spread over what, a six-month period? So as long as we're in this diesel run, we can assume that until we stop, we will continue to have a diesel surcharge six months after that. Is that, is that correct? That's correct how that works? So even if we were to stop in July, we would, you know, end of July, we would have one until December, right? Okay. So just understand that when we stop running diesel, we still will have a diesel surcharge attached to electrical bill for the, to spread it out so we don't get it all of us. And it's kind of a cumulative, if we continue through this, that we're at three cents now, we could potentially go higher than that.
I do have just one comment, the mayor's governor. It's true that as we continue to burn diesel fuel, it could go up, but also we're dropping off the, the charges that were incurred, you know, prior to six months. So you're dropping some and you're adding some. So it helps a little bit, not much.
All right, thank you, Bob. Any further discussion? Please call.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So we're gonna postpone this, but for how long after?
From what I understand, until we.
Till the drought.
Twenty-twenty-six.
We might end with our second drought by the time.
Right.
The date is till, um, for May fifth, so it'll be six months after May fifth.
That's when we started continuing, so.
It could be longer, until the diesel surcharge fall away.
That's what I'm suggesting, until this.
As long as that's understood, I'm fine.
That's, that's what I'm wanting.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
That passes, moves on, and we have no vouchers. Item nine, manager's report. Carl, who do you have for?
I've got a number tonight, Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna try to be really brief. We laid on the table our analysis of the impacts of Governor Don Mitty's budget on the city and KPU relative to what other municipalities are confronting. I think we got off relatively light. I will tell you, I heard both from the library director as well as Ray Madasowski today, the funding for the library looks intact as does the alcohol, our portion of the alcohol license fees that, that are remitted from the state. Obviously, the biggest hit is the raw fish tax. That no longer goes to the general fund, so it's primarily the harbors and KPU that take the hit on that. But legislation will be required by, to, to implement that. So the House and the Senate are gonna have to weigh in and we'll just have to, to monitor the, the progress that the legislature makes. So I know we've got a combined town hall meeting coming up later in the month, but it really is the, the boroughs who have the responsibility for education that are taking the major hits. So we're, we're doing okay from my perspective. Mrs. Moran already talked about the CDBG grant award. We haven't got any details yet on the grant agreement, but I do wanna acknowledge Mark's efforts as well as those of Wish. And I'm anxious to start moving that project along. And I would suspect that we will probably file a second application next year for actual capital improvements to the former Critic Building. We did include in the packet ADEC's beach monitoring report. And I think the implications of that are potentially gonna be more unfunded mandates on us. For your information, ADEC will be here April fifth to do a public presentation from six to seven at the Discovery Center, both relative to the beach monitoring and the cruise ship reports that we also included in the packet. So I would encourage anybody in the community that has an interest to go to that. I'm sure there'll be a lot of useful information. I previously advised the council that our, our special. I previously advised the council that our special meeting with the Peace Health Community Health Board has been scheduled for March twenty-seventh. That's a Wednesday. It's tentatively booked for here. I am looking at alternative location just so we can get a better user-friendly place to have a meeting where the council is on the dais and everybody else is below. That's gonna be dependent on whether I can get it televised live, and I'm working with KPU to do that. Given the interest in the issue, I think it's absolutely critical that the meeting is televised and we also would have regular public comment, so I'll keep you posted on that. If there is information you would like the health board to address or provide in advance of that meeting, if you could let me know that as soon as possible, I don't wanna keep them waiting for the day before. So I will take any requests and I'll get that to them. On the KPU side, we did have a SEPA meeting last week. I'm gonna let the mayor hit most of the highlights, including he's the new chairman for this year for SEPA. I think the big thing to come out of that meeting is there was discussion by the communities and the agency, and I think there was tentative agreement for SEPA to help out to some degree Petersburg and Wrangell for the cost of the diesel runs they're doing. I made it clear from my perspective, I think that's probably gonna have to be a one-time thing, and it's gonna be incumbent upon the community and the agencies to revisit the operations plan, to get a clear understanding of what everybody's doing and what it means to be intertwined communities and the benefits and the risks that go along with that. And there are definite benefits, but there are definite risks as we're seeing in this drought condition. So the message that Andy's been trying to promote and using KPU social media to do that, you know, we still need to conserve. And I know we've got rain for next week, but the longer term forecast puts us right back into sunny weather after that, so one week precipitation is not gonna get us out of that. And then conjunction with that, there is a report in the packet relative to the permit limits of our remaining generators at Bailey. Obviously, we're in discussions with ADEC about that. We think there's a way to get beyond those limits, but it will likely require additional compliance orders by consent. We haven't defined yet what the price we'll have to pay, but we are working diligently on that. And the last thing I have, again, laid on the table tonight, Mr. Donato and our fire department and the electric division and the South Tongas Fire Department were involved in a rescue operation out at Whitman with an injured hiker, and I just wanna commend Andy and express my appreciation for his efforts. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions? I'd also like to express my thanks to Andy in his response to that and any city employee in regards to their efforts in, you know, providing public safety and being watchful for the events that happen like that. We should be committed to that. So that brings us on to item ten. City clerk file?
None.
Thank you. City attorney file?
Your honor.
Thank you very much. Future agenda items?
I think we have the one already for the health plan.
So in regard to that and the direction, what are we gonna ask? Carl, are we just asking the layout, I mean, we've got kind of a blueprint of the plan.
We've got the information from those guys, so I guess now-
So I guess we would ask for an executive session to talk about negotiations? Is that where we'd be next?
That would be part of it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Carl. Yes?
I'm curious to, I'm just curious to know if it's such a good plan, would it be worth looking into it for our other employees?
That's something that we'll be reviewing already, and it would be my intent to engage PSEA tomorrow based on the comments that Mr. Johnson made tonight. If what he said was accurate and the PSEA is open to possible proposals, I think there's a way that maybe we can make this happen for them and then take a longer look, at least in terms of whether it makes sense for our other general government bargaining And then, you know, obviously, we have different health insurance for certain IBDW employees. That might be more problematic.
Yeah.
At least for fire, PSEA and non-represented general government and KPU, if it makes sense and we can possibly enroll, that could be something significant.
So as you move through that process, would you find it necessary because of deadlines and timetables, you inform us if you need that special meeting?
We would do that. If I, if I hear back that, you know, they can't do an extension, then we would probably be looking at a special meeting next week to meet that March fifteenth deadline.
All right, thank you. That brings us down to mayor and council comments. Henry.
I have nothing, your honor, at this point.
Yeah?
And I just like to say that, you know, I think that we're in a long-term drought, which is a crisis for our electric generation. And to reiterate my earlier comments that we should be putting together a task force, putting together or, you know, bringing this forward about what we can do, do about it other than just pay more for more diesel. We have aging diesel generators. How much are we spending on those diesel generators? Does it make sense to, for us to look at getting a windmill? I mean, does anything like that in the near term make sense to do rather than just do nothing? I think we need to discuss it. I think we need to see if there's any viable options out there and put them on the table and build them up and down. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing for you. Dick, do you have anything?
Yeah, nothing except I'll stay on the line while you guys go into executive session, Bob.
Dick, I did get a short note from you and I think we'll have that. So at this particular point, is there any comments you wanna make before we go in?
Nope, I don't think I have any. Everybody, I think everybody got the note, so you can deal with it there and we'll see what you come out with.
Thank you very much. Judy?
I just wondered how we're doing with the compensation plan, if we've heard anything from those folks.
We've been in touch with Ralph Anderson and Associates today. They are diligently trying to get it wrapped up and hopefully it won't be much longer.
And, you know, just talking about SEPA, I'm wondering if maybe they shouldn't do something, have a town hall, because we keep hearing different people come to the podium, they ask us about wind generation and all that stuff, and I know that they've done work in that area, but people just don't know about it. If there's some way that perhaps they could let the community know what they have done, I still think that it's a good idea for people to show up and maybe talk about what's possible out there, but maybe they're the ones that should know that.
A couple things, your honor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Donato and the folks who responded to my friend's problem out there. Thank you. I think you actually made it, could have been a potentially very bad situation a lot better. And I guess he's actually coming home tomorrow or maybe today. So, yeah, things are good. It's interesting because we hear a lot about wind generation, we hear a lot about tidal generation, and then we always hear, well, they're doing it in Finland or they're doing it in Japan, they're doing it elsewhere. And the implication is it's an easy and expensive thing, fix. I know that we looked as a community about thirty years ago very seriously at wind generation, and the feds said, we don't have enough wind. And they were very clear that we were about, we were about six miles per hour on average, too low to make it, to make it work. Plus the question, there was also a question about how much battery storage, which has obviously improved in the last thirty years, so there's. In the mean, and if the feds say you don't got the wind, guess what? They're not gonna pay for it and we're just not gonna get that. There's just no, it's, it's, end of story. That said though, since then, a town that actually has less wind than us, Kodiak, has some, some, yeah, some big things up on Porter Mountain, I think. And they also have an interesting governor that allows them to switch back and forth between that and hydro. And I suggested when I was, I heard about this when I was up at one of the conferences in Kodiak when I was the borough mayor, and we talked about it in the borough and I think, unfortunately at that point, SEPA was very, no, we don't wanna get into that. I understand to a point, but, you know, Sam raises a good point, maybe now's the time to start looking at that. As to tidal generation, our friends down in B.C. are looking at several huge projects, none of which are penciling out. And if they can't make it pencil out with almost unlimited government funding, just, I'm not saying we can't do these things, I'm just saying we have to be real careful when people say, well, but they do it in Iceland, but they do it in wherever. You know, it may not work here, and in the past, our own government has said it won't work here. Now, does that mean we should stop? No, but we also, we need to be realistic. There's necessarily a panacea out there that we're not paying attention to. Keep in mind, we've had slightly over one inch of precipitation since January twenty-fifth.
I'm dried out.
And that was snow. So unfortunately, as Carl mentioned earlier, you know, Noah says this isn't like a short-term thing, this is probably gonna be, we're gonna be looking at this for a while. So whatever we do is good, but we need to, we need to just not assume there's some magic bolt that we're just not smart enough to find. It may not be out there.
Mark?
I agree with council members Kuyfer and Bergeron, the time to start talking about it is now in a practical sense because these technologies are unproven in our area. We probably are looking at one more generation of diesel power, whether we like it or not, as a bridge to the next technology. We're not gonna have wind in place, we're not gonna have tidal in place, we're not gonna have anything in place. And if the drought persists, we're not gonna have hydro in place. Here's what we know. Diesel is dirty and it works. And if the generators are in the proper state of age and repair, they're reliable. That's probably an intermediate step to a longer-term solution. I don't know the science well enough. I do know this, the only thing that won't stop that's renewable is right out there. It's not the wind, it's not geothermal, it's not anything else. The tide moves, and when it stops, we've got a much bigger problem. Along those lines, since we're talking about a real lack of water, when we have this conversation, I don't know if it's time to start talking about desalinization. Guys, we can't generate electricity, how long before we don't have water to drink? I don't know the answer to it, I'm not trying to make a panic or overreact, but if we're talking about climate change that affects our area in a way that we've never forecast or foreseen, these conversations need to start happening. They're massively expensive and they're massively complicated, and none of us will be on this council when these changes occur. But I don't think it's too early to really start looking at solutions for this community, ten, twenty, fifty years down the road. Other than that, I got nothing more.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I forgot to ask you a question, and that was, what happens if our aging generators stop working? How much, how much water generation would we have before we ran out of water in Ketchikan?
If you're talking about the small cats that were renting or the small cats out at North Point Higgins, we could probably live by. If you're talking the loss of one of our big units down at Bailey that we could not bring up or repair in a short period of time, then you're probably looking at roaming blackouts. That's not something I really wanna envision happening, but worst-case scenario, that could very well be the case. As I said, our guys are doing a yeoman's effort keeping those big units at Bailey going, and they deserve all the kudos that we can give them. But Andy's staff, per your direction, is diligently looking on rehab plans for bags one and, one and three down at Bailey. And we will get to the other funds that you appropriated, looking at what the next increment of diesel ought to be. And that's about all I can tell you at this point.
Thank you. So I appreciate the conversations, and of course, we're all focused on what's going on with the weather and the power generation and the environment as a whole. But right now, the communities are working well together, the communications are weekly, they're monitoring things on a daily basis. They make draft recommendations to lessen the draft and the lakes and make sure that every community wants to have a little bit of reserve in case we did lose the diesel. We could spin up a turbine at a hydro in times where we can get our diesel back online Nobody can create more rain, I mean, it's that, we just gotta wait for the weather to turn. We saw a little bit of rise in Swan, it was very minimal, and we turned it off now due to a little bit of melt and groundwater. There's not much snow on the mountain, so again, we have to look long-term what's gonna happen in the summer when we start to get into camps and things like that, and maybe augmenting with diesel. We don't know that for sure. So I think it's a wait and see right now. We're doing everything in our power to plan our way through this and use our resource to our best advantage, so I take my hats off to all the utility managers, all the utility employees and those that are working on that because it's a daily, daily effort for it. So that was, that was, I think, probably the majority of the stuff at the SEPA meetings is make sure that we keep the open lines of communication here, and I think the communities have been working well together, and we've had conversations with each other and very supportive. I'm real pleased with what's going on there. In regards to those neck increments of power, when you're talking outside of the, I mean, the communities kind of take care of their own diesel stuff, but when you start looking at a wind generation farm and batteries or another hydro, we're in hopes that SEPA will take on that responsibility because they have the joint resources of all three communities, and we would deal with them in regards to how that works. The reason why we have hydro is because we've had rain for a number of years and we depended on that, and so places that have wind have wind, places that have the right tidal action have tidal, but we have, we have hydro, and we still may have one more increment of hydro to go in order to keep our reservoirs full going into the winter. What happened is we never replenished them, and we're not replenishing them now, so I think long-term we'll probably have a run of the river, another hydro project that will be a SEPA-owned asset that they'll be able to manage to keep the lake, not let them spill, but to keep them full. So I think that's kind of what we're headed in this, in doing. They do, they are looking at wind, they're interested in that, but again, you don't wanna put a million and a half dollar stick in the air and not have it work. So the idea is you gotta do your homework and find out where that best, best works. And so they put out these towers and they try to figure out what's going on. I think they have one on Mitkop Island right now, and it's just not looking out, there's not enough wind there to make it work. They're moving around and trying to find places. We're gonna have one here in Ketchikan, I think, fairly soon, and we'll be starting to monitor that. And you gotta get a year to two years' worth of history before you can make a recommendation to put a million and a half dollar project together to put a notch of the cost of the tower, I don't know what it costs for all the professionals, but. And then you're still back in the same boat, right now, you may not have enough wind to generate, so you're still stuck with diesel and hydro and they may not have the resource that you need.
Why not solar since that seems to be our new friend?
All right, so do we have any other new businesses this time? I don't, I didn't see any on the table, so that moves us into our- see any on the table. So that moves us into our first executive session. Request for an executive session, annual evaluation of the city manager in general.
Your Honor, can we get a break too, before?
What?
Yes.
We'll take five minutes.
All right. Come back to order.
Mark?
Your Honor.
Yeah.
I'd like to request that executive session number two be first, and then we'll do the first one.
I'll second that. Dick seconds that. Do we have to add that in the form of a motion? There are four hands that say yea. If I see four hands, we're going to go into the second, executive session first, one of us with the second. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
We never did the other one.
The city council directs the city manager to, I mean, I moved that week. Never mind. The city council declares that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated March 1, 2019, it is the best interest of the city to discuss Judge Russell Hollins' December 6, 2018, and January 24 and 25, 2019 rulings in the matter of Cruise Line International Association Alaska and Cruise Line International Association versus the city and borough of Juneau, Alaska, a municipal corporation, and Rory Watt, in his official capacity, a city manager, under case number 116CV000HRH, in executive session in accordance with that finding. The city council going to executive session in accordance with the Ketchikan Municipal Code 20402583 to discuss said discussion and the auxiliary items described in the city manager's memorandum dated March 1, 2019, which matters involve receiving legal advice with the attorney-client privilege.
Second. Then moved and second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
We'll just have to do executive session.
I feel safer.
So we'll reconvene, come out of executive session. There's a suggested motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm with the city council authorized the use of funds derived from the commercial passenger vessel excise tax in the amount of $250,000 to finance the Tourism and Economic Development Department's 2019 Berthree and Berthree parking lot reconfiguration project to undertake such improvements as detailed in the Public Works Director's Report dated February 28, 2019.
Then moved and second. Sam?
I think it's a, it's a wise and considered use of the CPB funds, and we should go forward as described. Thank you very much.
Hey, Dick, while we were in there, we talked about the configuration. Steve and Carl had reached out to the bus companies. They didn't have any problem with that. They said there are times when it would be nice to have an extra one or two buses up front there. It's not something they'll probably do all the time. It's not a full double-rolled stack all the way back to the Tongas building. And then there was conversations with merchants in the local area in regards to the difficulties parking in that lot as it's configured now and then going to the angle you're parking because of the larger pickups and access issues that we have in there was fine. So that was the drift of the conversation while we're in there. And I know one of the bigger concerns you had is whether or not we had talked to the bus companies or not. Okay, well, because I couldn't really talk about this because the executive session, which should not have been there for the project, it should only have been there for CBP funding. I didn't, wasn't able to confirm that. And at this point in time, I guess I'm going to have to disagree that they got the right answer back. Because one of the managers at the company, whenever this was being first looked at, I think with Mark and those guys, I knew they were counting spaces and they were looking at, we set up and drew a diagram. And you can't, if you set two buses up front there, like I tried to explain in my note, you cannot make that right hand turn out of there.
Unless those two buses are the first ones to leave, correct?
No, they're never, you can never assume that. That's the problem. If you back, you never know how the passenger here is going to come off that. We may load the last bus in line and try to get it out. We may load the first bus in line and it'll go. You've got a second bus alongside the first bus. That bus has to make a little boot and swing to get around that curve, or they're going to get blocked and have to back up every time. So I still think that we ought to table this thing or defer this until you bring those managers and those bus drivers in there, and they clearly understand what they're going to do and listen to them. You don't have to listen to me, just listen to them.
So Dick, I'm going to give Steve, I'm going to give to Steve the mic here for a little bit, and he'll tell you about the conversations he had.
Well, go ahead. But still, we still...
I appreciate it.
Still, we talk to them.
Important Harvest Director Steve Kopron. Dick, last month I met with David and Rose down there, and we talked exactly what you were just talking about. We established where the setback would be and what they would have to do, you know, in order to hold the first bus back a little bit so that they could make that swing out to the left before they made the right turn. And they said if we had a little bit of more space there, they would probably be able to add three or four buses, with a couple of them being the little half buses and that. So it's not something they want to use all the time, but they said any additional room would be welcome down there. And they wouldn't have to stack them in a way that it would make it where they couldn't get out. But they were, they were in favor of what we wanted to do.
Oh, we aren't going to fight with you, Stephen. You know that. But if they're not going to need it all the time, then why spend $250,000 ripping up that sidewalk and creating two spaces? Now, I think that you'll find, if you move that duck up where it shows on the diagram, you're going to take away at least two to three spaces right there. You're going to lose as much as you gain. I just think this is just nuts. And I think you ought to, on what you're going to really lose, or else try it next summer without moving anything and see what you really lose. I, we're wasting our money. I, we're just making a waste of our money.
Thank you, Dick. So there is a motion on the floor. Anybody else? Any further discussion?
Yeah, Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to defer this motion until the first meeting in April.
You're second?
Second.
Then moved and second. Judy, anything?
No, just one executive session.
I just have a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
Is there a motion on the table for this issue?
Yeah, when we come out, we'll have to deal with that. Yeah. We'll make sure that everybody's aware what the motion is.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just doing the motion to go.
Yeah. Please call the roll.
Okay. Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kuz?
Yes.
Kuz?
No.
That item passes six to one. Brings us to the next item on the agenda. See if I can find my agenda. Executive session, request for an executive session, annual evaluation of city manager, KPU general manager. Do I have a motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm with the city council going to executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A2 for the purpose of conducting the annual evaluation of the city manager, KPU general manager, which may involve discussion of subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion.
Then moved your second?
Second.
Then moved and second. Judy, anything?
No, just one executive session.
I just have a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
Is there a motion on the table for this issue?
Yeah, when we come out, we'll have to deal with that. Yeah. We'll make sure that everybody's aware what the motion is.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just doing the motion to go.
Yeah. Please call the roll.
Okay. Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
We should be allowed to vote present here in Congress, present.